Good evening and welcome to the Fuquay Varina Town Board Meeting for October the 20th, 2020. I will call our meeting to order. And at this time, I would ask Commissioner Smith to lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Gardner to lead us in our pledge. All stand.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for the opportunity to be here once again and be part of this town board meeting. Father, I know that you know what's on the agenda, you know what's best for this community. So, Lord, I pray you'll give us that wisdom tonight that we can make the decisions that work out best for our community at large. But we thank you for our community, the good things that are happening here. Thank you for our good citizens who live in our community. Father, do pray that you'll keep us and our town staff and our town citizens safe during this time of this pandemic. Lord, I pray that the day won't be far away, that we can start getting back to some semblance of normalcy here in Fuquay Varina. But, Lord, again, I ask you to be with us tonight. And, Lord, I pray that everything we do and say tonight would be pleasing your sight. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Turn and face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will ask our town manager to review the meeting protocol for public participation as it relates to this virtual meeting. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. All attendees that have joined the meeting tonight have joined muted. There is a public comment period near the beginning of the meeting as well as a public hearing that was tabled from a previous meeting. Therefore, the time to address the town board regarding items that are not the subject of a public hearing is during the public comments section of the meeting. If the public wishes to address the town board during either the public comment period or during a public hearing, they will need to notify the town host that they wish to speak. For the public's benefit that is attending the meeting this evening, if you are joining the meeting online and wish to speak, please press the raise hand button in the Zoom application. If you're joining the meeting via telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. After you have raised your hand, you will enter into a queue. When the public comment period or the public hearing begins, Mayor Byrne will ask the town host to recognize you to speak by calling out your name or the last four digits of your telephone number. You will be unmuted at this time and allowed to address the town board. We ask you to begin your comments by stating your name and address for the public record. The public is asked to keep all comments to three minutes so that all that wish to speak can be heard in a timely manner. Once you have finished addressing the town board, you will be muted for the remainder of the meeting. And this concludes the protocol for tonight's meeting, Mayor.
Thank you, Adam. We'll move to item 3A, the approval of the minutes from October 5th, 2020, regular scheduled town board meeting.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have no presentations tonight. We move to 5A. At this time, the, what do we call him, the host?
Yes, sir. That's right. Town host.
The host will call on individuals that have virtually raised their hand by way of the Zoom app or by telephone. Those wishing to address the town board will be unmuted, one at a time. As a reminder, public comment is for those wishing to speak on matters that are not subject, that are not the subject of a public hearing. Those speaking are asked to begin by stating your name and address for the public record. Please limit your comments to three minutes in order that all who wish to speak may be heard in a timely manner. Scott, do we have anyone that would like to address the board?
Mayor, I see no hands raised.
Okay. We will move right on then to 6A. Items tabled from previous meetings. Zoning Amendment and Land Use Plan Amendment, Carolina Land Group LLC, 1408, 1409, 1420, 1501, 1520, 1524, O and O Rogers Road, REZ 2020-14. And this item is to be tabled?
It is, yes, sir.
Is this the first time it's been tabled?
No, sir. It was tabled at our last meeting.
Meeting. Okay. And we're going to table this one again?
Yes, sir.
Okey doke. Do we need any motions or anything?
Yeah, probably just need to make a few brief comments, not as extensive as last meeting. So, again, the purpose of this agenda item is to continue the public hearing to the November 2nd, 2020 town board meeting for a requested zoning map amendment for a total of 105.41 acres located at 1408, 1409, 1420, 1501, 1520, 1524, zero and zero Rogers Road, from the Residential Agricultural RA Zoning District to the Residential Medium Density Conditional Zoning District and the corresponding land use plan amendment from small lot residential, large lot residential, and mixed density residential to small lot residential and mixed density residential only land use designation. I won't go into the level of detail I did at the last meeting or plan to once this matter is actually taken up and we continue the public hearing for public comment. I will just say that since the September 21st, 2020 Planning Board Meeting, the petitioner requested to table the zoning map amendment and land use plan amendments to tonight's meeting in order to further evaluate matters related to future development of the property. Management and staff support it continuing the public hearing and table in consideration to tonight's regular meeting per the petitioner's request. Prior to tonight's meeting, the petitioner requested to table the zoning map and land use plan amendments to the November 2nd town board meeting in order to further evaluate matters related to future development of the property. And management and staff is in support of continuing the public hearing and table in consideration to the November 2nd regular meeting per the petitioner's request. So, the public will have an opportunity at November 2nd unless that item is requested to be tabled further to comment either in favor or in opposition. Tonight's recommendation is for the board by motion to continue the public hearing and table consideration to the November 2nd meeting for rezoning map amendment or zoning map amendment, REZ 2020-14, as the address is previously stated. Mr. Mayor, you may want to check with the town meeting host just to make sure that there is no one here wishing to speak tonight.
Yeah. Let me ask this question. Is it going to require any kind of re-advertising or anything?
It will not as long as it's a continuance of the public hearing.
Okay. So, do we have anybody, Scott, that is on the line?
There are two people and there's no hands raised.
Okay.
I will say, Mayor, if the, to your previous question, if the petitioner were to
Go further.
Recommend something that was substantially different from what was originally proposed, a town may wish to re-advertise just as a matter of good policy, but it's not required.
Okay. All right. I will entertain a motion then to continue.
Mayor, some moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There are no public hearings scheduled for the October 20th meeting. Okay, we will move on. What is the board's pleasure on the items on the consent agenda?
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, A, B, C.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We move to item 10A. Contract award, Austin Ridge Greenway Hidden Valley Greenway Design, Kimberly Horn, More information about this agenda item will be presented by Town Manager Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider awarding a contract for the Austin Ridge Greenway and Hidden Valley Greenway Design Projects to Kimbley Horn in the amount of $298,276.96. As you all know, greenway development in Fuquay Varina has been a priority of the town and is reflected in our 2020 Comprehensive Systemwide Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. Greenways improve the quality of life for residents, provide safe means for people to ride bikes, run, walk, enjoy nature, commute to parks, stay healthy, connect residents to local businesses, and increase property value. The fiscal year 21 budget identifies and allocates funding to the design of two greenways that will better position the town in the future when applying for grant funding by having shovel-ready projects that are ready for construction. This is something we've talked about quite often in the past about having projects ready to go on the shelf when grant opportunities present themselves. The Austin Ridge Greenway Trail will consist of a 10-foot-wide paved borewalk greenway trail. The project will begin at the existing Bass Lake Greenway Trail located on the east side of NC 55 in the Austin Ridge subdivision and tie back to the existing asphalt at the Bass Lake Greenway Trail to the north, which is approximately 2,400 linear feet. And you can see on the map in front of you, this is the area in blue that has a label of Proposed Austin Ridge to Bass Lake Greenway. The Hidden Valley Greenway Trail consisted, or consists of a 10-foot-wide paved borewalk greenway trail. The project will begin at Jordan Meadow Drive, East of Perfor Road in the Hampton Park subdivision. It will continue north and tie back to Gallica Drive and the Old Waverly subdivision, approximately 3,500 linear feet. And it is shown on the map in front of you with the blue hash mark line labeled Proposed Hidden Valley Greenway.
You know, a comment I'd make, Adam, is that in this time of COVID, I have had more and more people comment to me about how they enjoy our parks and our greenways. And I would say they're probably being used three times as much as they would be in ordinary times. People are out moving around and they can, you know, walk or ride bicycles on these greenways and utilizing our parks. And, you know, we've done a good job with this for many years and it's really, they're being used now.
Yes, sir. Especially on these beautiful, nice weather days.
When you say planned greenway, what I'm seeing, so committed means it's funding or under construction or imminent happening. Proposed is what we're trying to approve tonight so that we can go to work to get it designed and installed. Planned would be something that looks like raw land beside it, development, assuming development goes in, they will be, it's planned that they will install, they will do it, and therefore, therefore, they will be installing that. It's not a matter of if they don't. They do, never we get the greenway. They don't, never we don't get the greenway.
That's right. And it's on our, it's on our plan. And so, future development would be responsible if it joins our planned greenways on our, on our plan.
Proposed greenway second from the top in your, in your key would be something that then is longer term, that we want to have the greenway there. We just don't see that happening here in the near future necessarily.
Correct.
Okay.
And we're actually starting to repair some of our greenways. Now, they've been in a long time.
Sure. The South Lakes Greenway, we're replacing some of our bridges. Yes, sir.
Yep.
And we have plans for the future maintenance and repairs for other greenways as well.
Sure.
You might be answering it before I interrupt you. Are you finished with your presentation? Mayor, I had somebody expert brought this up that's on the agenda tonight expressed interest in bidding on this right here. I'm assuming we did RFPs and typical requests for proposals and bids and they just maybe missed advertisement?
Well, I don't know specifically who you're speaking to, but we did go through our normal process of soliciting, soliciting interest on the project.
And so, did anyone else apply to bid on it? Or was this, was this a traditional bid process where you have sealed bids and you open and do proposals?
No, I believe this was a RFQ process, a request for qualifications. We picked a qualified based on a certain set of criteria. We picked a qualified provider and then negotiated the contract price.
Okay. When, how long ago was that? A while ago, wasn't it?
No, recently. I may have to ask Tracy to step in here if he's online to speak to the actual timeframe, but I don't believe it was that long ago.
Okay. So, they probably just missed out on it, on it at the time and kind of, kind of, we had public hearings and somebody said they didn't know about it.
How would they, how would they know about it would be the question?
We post it on our website. And sometimes we will actually reach out to providers who have provided services to us in the past to say, it is on our website if you're interested in it. Put, you're encouraged to place it in the middle.
Provided any services for us in the past.
They would need to go to our website to find that information.
Website, but could they call in and say, we'd like to get on the list?
Sure. There is a, on our website, you can sign up so that when we add new content for RFQs or RFPs, you would be pinged and emailed to notify you that there's a new listing available for your review.
Either way, it was a standard process. This was bid and done, just like anything else.
It was, yes, sir.
That's why, thank you.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything, anything else there, Adam?
Yes, sir. So, back to just a few additional comments. So, just so you understand, the recommended contract does cover a number of elements in the design process for both greenway projects, project coordination and administration, ground surveys, geotechnical investigations, environment documents, environment permitting, greenway design, hydraulic design, borewalk design, and public involvement. Town management and staff are recommending awarding the design to Kimbley Horn for the Austin Ridge and Hidden Valley Greenways. The fiscal year 21 budget identifies funding for the design of the Austin Ridge Greenway, which is $208,000, and the Hidden Valley Greenway, which is $125,000. And so, therefore, there are sufficient funds that cover the total design cost that is being recommended to you this evening of $298,276.
And you said, give me those numbers again.
In our budget, we had $208,000 for the Austin Ridge and $125,000, so we had about $333,000
Identified.
In the budget identified and $298 is what we're proposing tonight for Kimbley Horn.
So, bids are coming, this, this situation is 10% less than what was budgeted, which is great.
Yes, sir.
Over.
That's correct.
It's great. Great job. Wonderful. We'll go to get some more greenways done.
That's the hope. That's the plan. So, the recommended motion to the board this evening is to award a contract for the Austin Ridge Greenway and Hidden Valley Greenway Design Projects to Kimbley Horn in the amount of $298,276.96, subject to the town attorney review as to form and authorizing me as the town manager to execute the contract documents as presented and recommended.
I had a curiosity for my question. Never mind. You just answer that question. Okay.
Well, all of this is just design?
This is designed, so go ahead and have it on the shelf, ready to go. LAP funding, for example, would be one avenue that we could pursue. Grant funding to help with the construction of greenways. And typically, an applicant for those LAP funds would score higher if right-of-way and design were already out of the picture and construction was all that remained.
Does Wake County have any money? I know they've.
There are a possible avenue to explore as well.
Okay.
Yeah. I do want to just real quickly go back and I could follow up, but we also, at times, do select providers off of our on-call services list, both for contractors and for designers. And that is a process that we go through about every two years. And we select both large, mid-range, and smaller contractors based on a set of qualifications. It goes through the statutory process for selecting those. And sometimes we do select design firms off of that list, but it does go through the normal statutory process as well.
And then, as long as they, as long as they're bidding it within the budget, then they will be doing it. If it's above budget, then you would address it differently.
Exactly.
You have within that qualified list a couple, I mean, this is below budget. This is great. Normally, they're above budget, so I'm not trying to to pick on, pick on it at all. By any means, I'm very happy with the numbers. Is there typically more than one firm that we have?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Bid against each other within the approved group or such?
Yeah. So, we have typically two or three large, two or three mid-range, and two or three smaller contractors and that would, we would look to to negotiate.
Something like this where they bid against each other on, or no, you just select one with it and as long as it's within budget, then it's okay?
Exactly. The latter.
Cool. That's great. It's below budget. That's great. We're going to get a lot more done. Mayor, make a motion to approve this recommended.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. We're going to move on then to item 11A. Managers report. Adam?
Couple of items I just wanted to make the board aware of. First, when you get an opportunity, we do have our new website design that has gone live as of this afternoon. So, if you want to see the new refreshed look for fuquaverina.org, I would encourage you to get our website. We're going to be blasting out some information on social media about the new, the new look and the new design. Every, so often, we work with our website design provider, Civic Plus, to give a refreshed new look to our, to our website. And this year was the year for that. And so, we've, we've updated it as well. It looks very nice.
Susan kind of head that up?
Susan does head that process up. Nope, Susan heads that up.
Susan heads it up.
That's right.
We have a team that works with her.
Yeah. So, Susan works with a number of our department directors to sort of discuss and review ideas and concepts and visual improvements to the site. And then she would work directly with our vendor, Civic Plus, to convey what our goals and interests are. They would provide three or four different examples of sites and we would choose one. We did choose one and then kind of tweaked it from there to, to get it to its more modern look of today.
It, I mean, it looks good.
Yeah. The site's very nice. I think it's more user-friendly.
It seems to be cleaner.
It is. That's a very good way to describe it. There's not a lot of, we have, as do most local governments, there's a lot of content on, on a local government website. And so, in order to design it in a fashion that it's not so convoluted and so burdensome to sort of maneuver through is what your goal is, what your objective is. And Susan and her team have done a great job to put that together. We have 11 days left in this month and we have, with 11 days to go, we have set a new record for single-family permits issued. 95 as of this afternoon. And the previous record was 93, set in the month of August, I believe.
Wow.
And we still have 11 days to go this month. So, it's still, market's still pretty, pretty hot here in Fuquay Varina. And so, that's positive news. Also, just want to share that we are going to be receiving in the next five to seven days a reimbursement from Wake County through the Wake County CARES Act funding of about $31,000. And this is not the total that we will be seeking from the county. We will be submitting another application in the November, December timeframe. But this is funds that our fire department or the town is being reimbursed for because of the work our fire department did in assisting the town of Clayton during their, their challenges as it resulted with coronavirus. And so, there was.
Did we get it from Wake County or from Johnson County?
Wake County. There's part of Clayton in Wake County. And so, we're getting it from Wake County.
There's part of.
Clayton in Wake County.
In Wake County. That's right. It's their edge there. Like Andrew in Wake County.
That's right.
Okay.
And so, that'd be $31,000 coming back to the town through the CARES Act funding.
But that's also, how much more are you expecting to get?
We have about another $30,000 to $35,000 in expenses that we will be negotiating with the county towards the end of this calendar year.
And these are, both of these are things that we didn't have to get. Adam has stayed really close to this and as well as myself. And we, we kind of were told that this wasn't something that we would be getting. And, but he's bird dogged it. He stayed very close on it. And it will be about $60,000 that we will get here in Fuquay Varina that I'm not sure that all of the other municipalities are going to get into this.
Yeah. Certainly something that you got to have a good relationship with Wake County staff. Joanne Crabtree, our finance director, Mark Matthews, they've been doing a great job to sort of stay connected as well with the Wake County folks. And there, there is funding to be had if, if you have the right conversations and.
Go about it the right way.
Go about it the right way.
We, we heard about it, or I heard about it several months ago at the Wake County Mayor's Association that Kerry had gotten, had gotten some of it. And it sort of surprised Adam. And I knew as soon as he got to where he was going to be like a bird dog on it. And I appreciate it. And I, you know, there's a lot of different areas that Wake County can, can help us with. And this was certainly, or is certainly some of them. Thank you for following up on all that.
Yes, sir. So, just some additional information for the board. We did hire a new equipment, debris equipment operator in the Public Works Department, Jerry Lee Birch, and a new equipment, streets equipment operator, A.J. Smith. That was a promotion. As well as Angel Velazquez was a promotion within the department, and Joshua Horn. So, we've hired some new public works staff as well as a street maintenance worker, Jay Stewart. And so, we're, we're glad to have these folks here. Some of these positions were new positions. Some of them were just vacant positions that we needed to refill. I advised all of you that effective January 1st, Arthur Muberry, our Public Works Director, will be retiring from the town. And we have begun to advertise for his position to replace that position. And so, as we continue to work through that process, I'll keep the board informed. We do intend to review applications mid-November. That would be the goal. Our Finance Department continues to work with auditors to finalize the fiscal year 20 financial statements. And they're updating a number of internal procedures and internal training. Parks and Recreation Department, youth athletic registrations are underway for the modified winter season, which includes instructional basketball, which is a skill development program, competitive soccer, and cross-country. Which, by the way, we, we had a cross-country program for the first time this fall. It was, it was a hit. It was well-regarded in terms of the registration process as well as just the, the modified season, fall season that we had. It was well-regarded in terms of the registration process, as well as just the, the modified season, fall season that we had for cross-country. Participants seemed to enjoy it, so we are going to give it another go in the winter season out at Hilltop Needmore Town Park and Preserve.
It's one of those new activities that our Parks and Recreation has tried to put together during this COVID time. And I think that it's been very successful from everything I've heard. And I've heard a lot from the park people, but also from some of the participants, the families.
That's right. I think they've appreciated the outside-the-box thinking on what kind of programs that we can offer.
Yes.
RFQs for the Community Center North and Senior Center Project are due this Friday by 5:00 PM. We are, those are RFQs for the design of those facilities. And we are soliciting bids for the James A. Campbell Park restroom with the goal of awarding a contract in November. So I'll have more information with, to the board as, as we get more information back to us on that project.
Is that two bathrooms or one?
It's one.
Just one bathroom?
It is, it is one building with a men's and women's restroom.
Okay, it's two bathrooms. That's, that's what I thought.
Yeah, one building, men's and women's restroom.
At one time, we had, we were talking about trying to do it so small with just one.
This is the, the smaller prototype compared to what we were previously looking at.
But it's two bathrooms?
Two bathrooms. That's right.
Good, good.
Our Art Center, they've been working with the Downtown Association to plan a Halloween scavenger hunt. You might have seen some information about that on some of our social media sites. It's going to run on October 24th through the 31st. And clue sheets will be available at the Art Center. Dance and art classes continue at the Art Center. And many evening outdoor activities are transitioning to a virtual or indoor format as we enter the fall. A number of exciting holiday-oriented activities are in the works that we're planning. We'll have more information on those, including a virtual, virtual socially-distanced performance of the Nutcracker. As it relates to our IT department, we are preparing for our main server infrastructure upgrades. The Hilltop Needmore Road Elementary School, Community Center, North Senior Center Joint Master Plan was presented to the Wake County Board of Education Facilities Committee last week, and they endorsed it. And so I'm working along with other members of the management team in finalizing a preliminary staff and recommended master plan. And we'll schedule a virtual public information meeting with Q and A in early November prior to presenting a management recommendation, recommendation to the town board. Let's see if there's any other. I do have a few other items I need to just inform the board about here. As it relates to our Downtown Department, mentioned we're gearing up for the downtown Halloween and Christmas season. We are going to be installing our downtown kiosks in the next couple of weeks. Those are in, we're just kind of going through some final preparation work, but those will be installed. One in the downtown Fuquay District, one in the downtown Varina District, and then one inside the Town Hall. These will be virtual touchscreens with sanitation following the touching for a little while. Information kiosk where people can get information about town events, the happenings of the town, our downtown businesses, and a lot of additional information that we're working through. Our Public Utilities Department will remind the board that we'll have our first inter-basin transfer public hearing. That was held last Wednesday night in Chatham County. And our next one is going to be held, it actually is being held tonight in Cary. And then we'll have another one tomorrow night in Fayetteville. These are the public hearings that we are required to do in order to move to the next step of our inter-basin transfer process. The census is officially ended on October 15th. While we're waiting for the final numbers, we do believe Fuquay Varina is between 99 and 100% accounted for. I want to congratulate and acknowledge the hard work of our Planning Department staff. Our Planning Department Director Pam Davison, Alyssa Stafford, and Allison Wright in our Planning Department. They met this challenge with enthusiasm, with motivation. They understood the importance of the census and the need to make sure that everyone is accounted for in Fuquay Varina nationally. I believe the, the national percentage is about 99.5% and we're right there, a little above it.
You know, it's probably, it's probably the most important thing because it will affect us for 10 years.
Exactly.
The funding sources and the schools, there's a whole lot of things that are tied to the, the census. And it's not just this year, like we tend to think about things, it's for the next 10 years. And I'm so proud of them for that. That's a nice achievement for sure.
Yes, sir.
And we had some community volunteers too, didn't we?
Oh, there were a number of community volunteers as well that participated.
We had a community, a committee and, you know...
A complete counts committee. That's right.
And I think that it was a very positive experience, you know, for our community. And I appreciate, appreciate it, Dan.
And then I will just say that we hired two new field inspectors in our inspections department, Pedro Aruda and Garrett Scott. And they both started for us this week. And so we're glad to have those gentlemen on board as well. Both brought experience with the inspections and building industry, which we were glad to be able to recruit as a part of our team. Additionally, there was a quarterly report, provide it for your review in the Agenda Pack. And if you have any questions about the quarterly report, please let me know. I do want to just update the board real quick on the Hilltop Needmore Town Park and Preserve dam rehabilitation. And so I'm just providing this information for your consideration with respect to concurrence for the submittal of a Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities grant to support the rehabilitation of the pond dam located at the Hilltop Needmore Town Park and Preserve. Actually, I believe that there's a kind of a photo here on your screens that you can reference here. So on September 4th, the Federal Emergency Management Agency published a Notice of Funding Opportunity, or a NOFO, for Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Brick Grant. One of the charges that this town board has, has put towards me, and I in turn have put towards my staff, is to look for opportunities for grants for the entire menu of projects and programs that we do on an annual basis. This one came before us and we thought it might be a great opportunity to explore. The North Carolina Emergency Management has accepted letters of interest from sub-applicants for the grant on behalf of FEMA. And they set that as a deadline of October 9th. So we did complete the letter of interest through their online portal. And the letter of interest does not bind the town to any agreement and is a pre-qualification to enable the town to submit an application for a grant of up to $500,000 for the total project. So without the letter of interest, you can't even apply for the grant. So we went ahead and submitted that letter of interest since it was non-binding. If the grant application is successful and the town accepts the grant, the town would need to commit a $125,000 cash match to leverage $375,000 in funding for the repair. This project will provide a recreational enhancement to the Hilltop Needmore Town Park and Preserve. And it improves the safety of a high, what is qualified as a high-hazard dam. Management staff are seeking general town board concurrence prior to submitting this grant application, given the cash, cash match requirement. We have begun work with Friesen Nichols in updating the emergency action plan for the dam located at the park. The updated plan was submitted by staff, town staff to the State Dam Safety Unit on August 10th of this year. And we are awaiting review comments back from the state. In addition to updating our, our plan, Friesen Nichols has prepared a cost estimate that itemizes repairs that would bring the dam into compliance with state law. There is no funding commit, commitment required at this time. However, a future to-be-determined investment at the park is identified in our fiscal year 25 adopted five-year plan. This dam improvement and park enhancement would be an eligible use of recreation unit fees identified for the use at the Hilltop Needmore Town Park and Preserve. So there's no action required of you tonight, except for I'm looking for general concurrence prior to us submitting the grant application. I don't want to necessarily dedicate staff time and energy to preparing a grant application to submit if the town board is not prepared to put the $125,000 cash match.
Where is the, the grant coming from?
FEMA.
Okay. And we've just recently worked with them on the Mineral Spring Park, didn't we?
No, that was the Golden Leaf Foundation.
Well, I realize it was the Golden Leaf Foundation, but we had to work with FEMA in order...
Well, that was a prior, yes, relationship with them. That's exactly right.
I mean, I think it's something you ought to move forward with.
That's my recommendation. This is going to be something that we're going to need to address one way or the other.
Soon or later.
That's exactly right. And if there's an opportunity to bring a majority of grant funding into the fold to be able to address this, I think we should, we should do that. Otherwise, this opportunity may not present itself in the future, and we may be on the hook for the entire cost.
Where, where is this in relationship to the whole Crooked Creek? Maybe you could show that to us on a map.
Uh, I don't know that I'm going to be able to show it to you on a map tonight, Mayor, but this is on the portion that is on the south end of, of the park.
Big lake and pond.
What's that? Excuse me?
Big lake and pond.
That's correct.
Big pond.
That's right.
Probably about the whole six or seven.
That's right. You could hit over the water if you really cracked it.
You get hit like Jay Myers.
That's right.
Not like Blake Massengill's all in the water.
But it's on, on this side of that lake or on the other side or, I was just trying to get an idea of...
It is on the south side of the, the lake.
Okay, the lower, where the, where it's kind of low in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you. I know exactly where you're talking about now. There's the houses I see here too.
Yes, sir.
Backs up to it. And that would be a good thing for, for that area too. Okay.
So those eight houses, excuse me, those eight houses it mentioned, they, they are aware of their, being in that situation, aren't they?
They are.
I think it's a good thing. Does anybody have any negative feelings? Everybody feels good about it?
I think it's a good thing.
I agree with the mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
I think so.
Okay. Additionally, I just want to make the board aware that we are, we do have an event tomorrow from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at the Fuquay Varina Police Department Operation Medicine Drop. And so there's information on our website and on social media about that. But encouraging people that have medicine that is either no longer good or no longer need it to, to drop that off versus putting it into the wastewater stream or, or just hanging around the house. So getting rid of it in a proper and safe manner.
What, what will they do with it? Burn it? Take it one place and burn it or?
You know, I, I need to get you an answer on that. I, I know that there's a, a plan for that that the police department has, but...
And they've been doing it for a pretty good while.
They have, but this is a sort of organized event for that. Yes, sir.
They do it about once a year, don't they?
Yes, ma'am. And then finally, there is a first, before we move to town board comments, there's two other items. One, there's a first reading in your agenda materials, a town code amendment regarding our land development ordinance. This is amendment number 12. However, it will not come before the town board at your first meeting in November. The Planning Board last night decided to table this for further conversation and dialogue. And so they will take it up at their November 16th meeting. And assuming that they pass it out at their November 16th meeting, it would come to you the first meeting in December. But you can go ahead and begin reading it and familiarizing yourself with what is being recommended and proposed. And unless there's any other questions that the board might have of me, then I would propose we begin having some conversation about vision and mission statements. The first sort of step in our strategic plan discussion. Mr. Mayor? If I can kind of get that, get that started, if you're ready to do that now.
Didn't you just pass a sheet out?
I did, yes, sir.
Okay. And that's really kind of what you, and we'll talk about this for a little bit before we go on to our comments by each, each of us. As y'all will recall, Adam mentioned to us, well, I don't know, this has been going on for a while.
It has.
It's a process that we're in, and this is part of that, that process. But he asked us last week if we could maybe make some comments about our mission and vision statements. And he has given us some that are of our peers along these lines. And we've had some that have been kind of forwarded and turned in to us by board members. And, you know, we just want to have some general discussion about this now. It's not anything in, you know, you know, not anything that's locked in. But I know Jason, you, you submitted some, and why don't you make, start us off?
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, just real quick before, before he does. I do have, again, the mayor reference in front of you, the vision statements and, and mission statements from some of our peers. And as we're thinking about vision statement and mission, mission statement, as you are thinking about it, as it relates to vision statement, ask yourselves, how do we see ourselves as a community? That's what the vision statement should answer. And as we think about, sort of be documenting live in real time so that we can sort of get to a vision statement and mission statement that we feel good about. The mayor did say, this is not set in stone, and that is, that is true. This is a sort of a launching point for us to begin developing the bones of a strategic plan. Our core values, our objectives, and strategic action plan for achieving our core values or meeting our core values. These are all going to be things that we discuss in the next several months, culminating in a more in-depth discussion during our annual strategic planning retreat. Where the hope is, is to come out with a, a near-complete plan that we can some, at some point in the spring of next year, maybe it coincides with our budget process, unveil this strategic plan to the community and to the public. And we'll do that in a number of, of ways. Certainly, our website and social media platforms will be one of the ways we do that. But it all starts with our vision and our mission, and that's what we're here to discuss this evening.
And I, I think what we've got to realize is that many of us have been here for a good number of years. We're having more and more people move into our community. And this is information that would be, help them become aware of, you know, our community.
That's right.
As I look at the first one, the vision statement, I, you know, I think about our past as farming. You know, our banking. I mean, you know, it, it was, Fuquay Varina was its own area for many, many years. And we were the real retail, commercial, shopping area of southern Wake County. You know, Holly Springs wasn't, was a very, very small community 50 years ago. And most of the people in Holly Springs actually shopped, you know, here in, in Fuquay Varina because of the, the commercial base that we had. And I think that's, you know, it's a piece of history that we, that we want to kind of identify with.
And, you know, just if I could, real quick, just before Commissioner Wunsch comments. So a couple of things. As it relates to, if you look at the, the peer statements, you know, if you ask the question, how do we see ourselves? Well, Apex sees themselves as being unified, as being good stewards, as being charming, environmentally focused, focused on the future. Garner sees themselves as focused on economic, recreational, and cultural opportunities, as well as good planners and good investors. Holly Springs sees themselves as focused on quality of life and a safe and family-friendly community. Morrisville, and they use some great key words in their vision statement, sees themselves as sustainable, as thriving, as a diverse and inclusive community, and they're focused on well-being. And Wake Forest sees themselves as vibrant and diverse and public servants, and they're also focused on quality of life. Now, when you ask the question about what are we going to do to achieve that vision, Apex says, we're going to provide exceptional public service, and we're going to cultivate opportunity. Morrisville says, we're going to connect our diverse community. We're going to enhance the quality of life, and we're going to do that with innovative programs and services. And Wake Forest says... And Wake Forest says, in order to achieve our vision, we're gonna preserve our character, and we're gonna foster economic opportunities, and we're gonna strengthen our neighborhoods, and we're gonna deliver superior services, and we're gonna embrace the diversity of our citizens. So they're telling us in their vision statement how they see themselves, and in their mission statement, what they're gonna do to achieve that vision. And so, that's what we need to do, is, is come up with that. On your screens in front of you, not the bold writing, but the, the very first vision statement and the very first mission statement are suggestions and ideas that Commissioner Smith has. The second mission statement is a suggestion that Commissioner Wunsch had, and at this point, Mayor, I'll get quiet. I'll be a little bit of a scribe for a moment.
Okay.
You turn it over as you see fit.
I want to get input from the town board, because this is truly, it shouldn't come from staff. It should come from the town board. And let's start with Jason, then we'll move on.
What I, what I was, when I was thinking about this, I was thinking about, what's the first thing I think about when I think about Fuquay Varina? And the first adjective that comes to my mind is friendly, that we're a very friendly community. We get recognized and noticed all the time as, as being friendly, historically friendly, always friendly. And so, that was a word. One thing I didn't put in my suggested mission statement that I would also include would be diverse. And I definitely liked how that was incorporated into other statements, because we, we are diverse and we celebrate diversity in this community. So, I had it as us being a friendly, diverse community. The other thing, the other thing that I thought about is that we put a very big and important emphasis on preserving our past, because our past, we have such a rich past in our downtowns, in our community, with the support of our museum. But we also embrace our future, so we, we acknowledge our historical character and all those who have come before us, but we also embrace our exciting future, and that's certainly what I've been blessed to be a part of over the last seven years. And then, and then the other term I-
Well, longer than, longer than that, you've been a part of it, which is gonna help-
Yeah, on board, yeah, definitely longer than that, but on this board, where we've, we've, we've really embraced the plan for the future, embraced the future. And then, I always hear about Fuquay Varina having a superior quality of life, that we provide a superior quality of life in the town. And, and when I signed on to the, or when I went on to the new website, it was, you know, I think very indicative of that. Parks, twenty parks with five hundred acres, I mean, that's all goes to, along with the wonderful services that are provided by our town. And that, you hear a lot of people talk about in our community about being proud to be from or living in Fuquay Varina. So, and I know we all do, I take pride in living here and being a part of the community. So those were words that I suggested in my mission statement was that-
Jason, you probably ought to talk into that microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Words that I, I suggested that we used in our mission statement were, that we, you know, strive to preserve our past, embrace, and I would say, and plan for our exciting future, provide a superior quality of life, and which in the long run makes us proud to call it home, Fuquay Varina. And so, those, those were some of my ideas for our mission statement. And I use the word strive, I think that, you know, not to be funny, but I say that a lot in the legal profession, that, you know, when people ask, will you guarantee this outcome? And I say, no, but I will strive. And, and, and that leaves, you know, the room to that, we are going to try our hardest, and we are going to plan and prepare. We can't always guarantee an outcome, but we're sure gonna strive for it, so.
Thank you very much. And we'll move around, and again, as, as you think of additional things, don't hesitate to, you know, to mention them or to email them to, to Adam. As we move, move forward, we'll, this will be something we'll all talk about as the process is moved forward. And, you know, I think about our churches being an integral part of the community. And I think a lot about the, the diversity, the, you know, I've celebrated, you know, two churches. Basil Creek is an extremely old church, and then recently Pine, Piney Grove, in our area is an extremely old church as well. So we have a tremendous amount of church history that is in our community. Commissioner Smith, did you wanna add anything, or, you know, just let, let go around the room and then come back to you?
No, I think what I'll say is, I think you're seeing both things that I wrote and presented, that I, that I still want to see as cling to the charm that we've had as a small town, the, kind of our past charm. You know, we recognize that we are a very dynamic, growing community. Adam gave us numbers tonight on building permits. But what makes Fuquay Varina unique to me, that I identify with, is the fact that we have a, a lot of charm that we've managed to save as we grow into the future. So any future plans that we have, or any future visions we have, is very important to me, at least, on how the others feel, that we maintain some of that small-town charm that makes us an attractive community. I think that's one of the reasons we're growing so fast. I think that's one of the reasons people want to be here, is that we're now up over thirty thousand people, but you can still walk down Main Street in either of our downtowns and feel like you're in some of the small towns that I was traveling through in East Texas just yesterday. Just very, a small-town feel, still has a rural feel to it, which goes back to what the mayor said about our farming history. But at the same time, we're dynamic, we're diverse, we're growing very fast. And to keep it attractive, I think we have to maintain a look back to what has made us a charming town, for us to be successful as we grow into the future. You see that over and over, I keep throwing something about the back, the past and the charm to it, because to me, that's important. Marilyn?
Well, Commissioner Smith said it very well. That's exactly why I wanted to run for town board, was in the face of all this growth, I wanted us to hold on to the small-town charm that, that was one of the things that brought people here to begin with, you know. I also like, I like the word, using the word community in either of, or both of these, because I feel that there is a real sense of community in this town. And I, I like to think we're a charming, small town with a big heart. And that comes through in the support of our children, the support of our schools, the support of our teams, the, you know, the, just so many of the, the things we do, just like the angel fund. You know, you put the word out, and everybody turns themselves inside out in this town to, to stand up for those who need it. So, I think those are things that are important to me, and I saw them in these others. I like, I like the diversity. I like celebrating the diversity. I just think we're the best place to live.
That's a good, that's a good one, too. I like that one, the best place to live.
Let's just start right there, say that.
Best place to live, work and play.
Yeah.
Wish we could do a little bit more of those things, but COVID's cutting out.
Words of wisdom here.
I, I don't know if I have words of wisdom or not, Mr. Mayor, but, but part of the, the struggle that I had with this is normally, in, in these kinds of sessions, you, you look at core values, and then from the definition of core values, you build your mission statement. And I think in reading what a lot of the other municipalities have done, is somewhere, I think they've identified core values. And I remember several years ago, when we went through an exercise similar to this, we talked about what core values we would like to identify here in Fuquay Varina. And I remember one of them was indeed, a friendly community that stays connected. And the other was maintaining that small-town character, not necessarily charm, but character, because the understanding was that as we grow, we know that we're going to move more to a, a more rural, urban kind of community. But at the same time, we can promote that, that small-town character that I think has attracted so many people. So, I'm looking at key words like friendly, staying connected. We value that our citizens have a sense of place. I mean, these are the kinds of things that are core values, and from those core values, I think as we go through the discussion, we can form even a more dynamic mission statement based on those particular values. And at one point, the vision statement for Fuquay Varina several years ago was that we were a friendly community, and that we did focus on, and we valued maintaining that small-town character. So, I think that those are core things that needs to be included in the, in the mission statement, because I see those as the character or the characteristics that will continue to attract people to our community. But I think it's going to be important for us, as we couch our mission statement, to make sure we maintain what, what I consider to be the soul of the community. Because as we continue to grow, I see there, there being efforts for us to move to a more suburban community and, and, and be pressured to move away from that small-town village sort of character that was part of the conversation several years ago. I think that's important for us to continue to look at that, because we can still grow, but we can still also be considered like a village if we maintain those small-town character, identity. I think that's one of the things that, that we need to look at. So, those would be my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Those are good ones. They're very good ones. Mayor Proten, you have any words of wisdom for us as well?
So, Adam, scroll back up to the top, so I can look at the sentence that Larry had written at the top of the leaf. What I liked about this right here and the direction of what I see going here is, to me, the most important, I think each board member here brings different things that are either, that, that helps them provide their thoughts and how they think of things. Some, some board, board members think about past, some board members think about present, some board members think about future. And we all think about all three items, but certain different areas that we all tend to think about when we're coming together with our thoughts. And what I like about all this right here is that, I mean, I see it saying, remember in the past, we always remember our history and heritage, where the town came, came from, these comments that were made here, that embrace the present, because that's simply where you are today. The past is what got you to the present, and then we plan for the future. And the biggest thing we can do is planning and preparing for the future. The amount of plans that we've done between transportation, sewer, water, roads, all these sorts of things. And so, I think that the, the activity that this board does is greatly reflected in those kinds of comments right there. The most important thing, as you, you know, in a plan and preparing, I mean, some of the most important things that we do as elected officials and leaders is, is our visionary's, vision for the town. From a mission statement, mission and vision statements get very similar to me. But Adam, your comments of how do we see ourselves versus what are we going to do, helps clear it to me. I'll stop right there. Allow me to really help think about these, and so visions, how we see ourselves, and so I think that hits out there, and what are we going to do? I mean, these two sentences right here are talking about how we're committed to the past and visions of today to become, and that hit past, present, future right there. Jason's comment of a friendly community that, that strives to preserve our past, and again, just past going back to current, embracing an exciting future, provide superior qualities of life. I mean, that's what I think the citizens of Fuquay Varina look at us most of, what are we going to do for them? How are we going to provide them their quality of life? Now, everybody looks at what's important to them differently in quality of life, whether it's taxes, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's parks, whether it's any different service that the town they offer. But that all goes back to quality of life, and that's our most important thing that we can do for, do for our citizens is, and a poet to choose to live in Fuquay Varina, and how they reflect to their quality of life. And so, I think that a lot of good comments have been made, made here. When I look at some of these comments others have made, what I do like about the directions, I see, I see our couple of ideas on each of these headlines are going, is shorter and to the point. Some of these down here, I think, get awfully wordy, and the public does not, people tune out, have short attention spans. And so, when we can hit our comments to the, sweeten to, to the point, which is where these statements are going, versus some of these down here are very, very long and wordy statements. And that's why I like to say things to be able, so it's concise, there's no miscommunication or clarification or rambling on to anybody that reads these.
Part of it is, you know, the, the quality of life is residential, but it's also the industrial base that we have. You know, the jobs that are provided for, you know, here in our community. You know, acknowledging those and what has been done for many, many years here. You know, Fuquay Varina is not, it's not a new kid on the block. We've been around since nineteen oh nine, and we've celebrated our hundredth anniversary now, over ten years ago. So we're a hundred and eleven years old, I reckon. We're growing up. And the industrial base and the commercial base that we have is pretty dynamic, pretty diverse. And that allows for those jobs and the quality of life that I think I've heard several times mentioned as being, you know, being important. Well, Adam, have we got enough to start with, and then we can kind-
Yeah, I mean, I think the ultimate goal is to get to a formalized statement on vision and mission. But I think perhaps the, the better next step would, for me to take some of this feedback and try to develop a concise, not lengthy, but a concise couple of options for you to consider that try to trigger on some of these key words and values that you have mentioned this evening, both for the vision statement and for the mission statement, and then provide those back to you for your review and consideration.
That's, I think that sounds fine to me, and I, I think it's, again, I go back to this, it's a process, it's not-
That's right.
We're, we're still moving the ball forward. But Commissioner Harris?
I just had one other thing that I, that jumped out, and I think is important in the, in the vision statement, and I think it's been alluded to, is the quali, the quality of services we provide for the citizens. I think that that's important, and, you know, notwithstanding everything else, I think the expectation is that that's the core function of, of, of what we are about, is that we, we make sure that people feel safe in their homes, that they have, you know, safe communities, that they have services, utilities, all of these kinds of core functions. And I think it's important at some level to, that be part of what we incorporate into a vision statement.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to say that.
Those are good thoughts.
I, I wanted to say one more thing, too, and that was the friendliness that almost everybody mentioned. There is, it's actually legend. I mean, it goes back to Sippy Hall. I mean, Shirley Simmons can tell you.
Yeah, well, when I first came to Fuquay, and this, or Fuquay Varina, it's been close to fifty years ago now. You know, the farmers were so much a part of it, but the farmers, and even today, as you will ride by someone, they'll typically wave. And the farmers back then waved at everybody, everybody, their neighbors. You know, they were just acknowledging their neighbor or their friend that was out on the road. And I, I think a lot of it was done in case people broke down, they knew, you know, this farmer lived at a certain area. But it was a real tradition when, fifty years ago, when I came, and I think it's still there today. I see many of the, the farmers still, still acknowledging, still, you know, wa- waving if you go slow by their farms and that sort of thing. But I think that's a good, good point, Marilyn, the real friendliness of the area.
I I also think that when we talk about, or we think about how we see ourselves, you need to think how we want to be, how we want to see ourselves. And from that standpoint, some of these statements that had included things like a future where all succeed, or something, you know, that inclusive, you know. I think, I think maybe we we should be thinking also not just how wonderful we are, but how the, what we, what kind of community we aspire to be.
Okay, thank you all very much. And I'll try to work with Adam, too, to kind of bounce things off of him. And if anybody has any, another line or something, please forward it to Adam because this is something that it's from all of us. You know, I mean, this is what we're trying to do is to do something that will be a real signature for our community, you know, for years to come. Now, it doesn't mean you can't change it next year and then next year after that.
You can tweak it, certainly. Before we move on, Mr. Mayor, just want to verify, before I click off the screen, Scott, I know it says saved at the top, but I just want to make sure it's saved. Are we good? All right. So I can click off my screen here. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm good.
Okey dokey. All right, we're going to move on to board member comments. And we'll start with Mayor Pro Tem Massengill.
Got a few comments. First one, happy early birthday, Mr. Manager. Come tomorrow.
Thank you.
Been a big day.
Another year.
What'd you say?
Another year.
Hope you don't have another one quite like this when I'm 50.
Fifty good years and 50 more, right?
What's that?
Fifty good years and 50 more.
I haven't got to 50 yet. I hope I still look like this when I'm 50 years old.
There you go. Couple of the comments, one in line with that. Talking about the Communications Department, and I know Susan's been working on a lot of these items. And so a dash more that she's doing highlighting staff and and neat staff and things like that that's going on and highlighting employees of the town. I enjoy that a lot because I know most all the employees, but then again, know a little fun fact about them. And the public has also made comments to me about how much they've enjoyed seeing that and getting to know things in those comments. I think that's really been excellent and a good job doing that right there on on social media. And at the same time, I'm doing these these great things and getting messages out to the public. Our new town website has been launched. I don't know who else has seen that yet, but it's been done very well, a very good job.
It was hot off the press. It was literally not long before this board meeting.
All right, well, it may have been a coincidence or not. But either way, I was I was on it and saw it and it looked great. And Scott, have you been involved with that also? Okay. And so the website looks great. And that's really easy to use and it's a good website. And so as we know, how much, I mean, not just Corona pandemic, people stay at home and stuff, but I mean, the internet in general is so great and so easy. And and as we've added stuff to our website over the years, between what's coming to Fuquay Varina and then just the interactivity and paying bills online, but the new website looks really good. I noticed that. And just want to congratulate Susan on how good that website looks and the work that's been done with that and also what she's doing on our social media, recognizing neat things about our employees.
I think that's, those are very good comments. And a lot of towns in Wake County are starting to to do some of that. I know Wake Forest has and-
They just copy us, though. We're Dashmore.
But it's, it's, it is really a good thing for all of us to go on there and like them and to acknowledge them in some way or fashion. The thing that has happened to us, and you know, we give Scott a little credit for this, this Ting deal continues to help and during times of COVID and during times that you're relying on the social-
That's right.
-media side of it. Fuquay Varina has kind of come of age and we're providing those first-class internet services back into our community. And Spectrum is doing a, doing a very good job now. And I I just think we're, you know, we're blessed to be able to have as much high-speed, you know, internet throughout our community that that really does, does help us and helps our citizenry. I mean, we tend to think it it helps each of us individually, but it truly helps everybody when we do this. And it's a little bit like Commissioner Harris mentioned about those, you know, core services. You know, we have more core services now than we used to. You know, you used to think about, well, you needed water and sewer and you needed roads and a little electricity, you know. But now it's, it's really more core services. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I do want to say again to those who are involved in the census project, from our people in planning who worked on it so hard to the mayor and his contest with the mayor in Wake Forest, all of the things that generated publicity. And we were able to successfully get pull the census off as well as we did in a COVID environment. I mean, it's pretty impressive. So I'm impressed with what our staff did with that. Second thing, I think most of you know that I will be missing next week's meeting due to some surgery, but I will look at the agenda on the weekend leading into it. If I have any questions, I'll let the town manager or the mayor know. If I have any concerns or questions for what they're worth, I'll send those on. And I'll try to be back for the second meeting by November, at least by Zoom, if not in person.
You may have some visions.
Might not share them.
Well, certainly good, good luck with your, with your surgery.
Yeah, this knee's going to hopefully be better when we finish.
Good for you. I I believe it will. I believe you'll be fine.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Harris?
I don't have any comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wunsch?
I just, and perhaps the board can just give me some more information, help me out with this. But I, I was messaged yesterday that someone who's been very important to our town history, Donald Avery, passed away yesterday, I believe. And when I had looked into his life, because I'm not familiar with him, but I know he was a member of the Fuquay Varina Baptist Church and that he ran a store on Broad Street for 50 years, a craft store. And I, I don't remember that since I've been here, but apparently was extremely involved in the community.
How long have you been here now? 20 years.
Well, Campbell from 96 to 99 and then here.
Yeah, so you've been here 15 years or so. He, he probably was, it's close, you know, right into that time period. I'm not sure he was open then or not, but he sold Christmas trees. He was a hobby. He fixed everything.
Pictureframer?
You know, was an integral part of the Varina community every day, downtown, every day. And, you know, helped with get us organized to, you know, get all the ownings down over that were in Varina. There were, there was a lot of those that had to be, you know, taken down, metal ownings that were not time equivalent and or historic. And, you know, Donald was, he saw the direction we were trying to go in. And I I felt like he was always supportive of our town in a very big way.
And I would just echo the comments that the Mayor Pro Tem said about our, just social media's been really phenomenal, has always been phenomenal, highlighting the employees and learning things you didn't know. That's been, that's been exciting. And the chief continues to do wonderful social media and getting the word out. I think we do a phenomenal job with that in the town. And, and finally, just, just, it's just great to see, like the mayor was saying at the beginning of our meeting, just our parks being so used now. I mean, even more so. No one knew, you know, years ago, of course, that this was coming. But now we have it and it's so good that we have it even more so because you want to be able to do that type of activity in a, during a pandemic. And, and so, so that's just been so wonderful to see people. You know, even, and even just after, when I was dropping my daughter off at high school this morning, seeing people walking, running in the community and, you know, just such a healthy lifestyle. And, and also to the manager's comment about the, you know, breaking a new record in housing permits, that's just exciting to hear, especially with 11 days to go left in the month. And it seems like almost every month, we've been breaking another record with that. And, and even more so great to hear during a pandemic and everything going on in the world. It's just great to see. I always like to quote the Mayor Pro Tem's statement he made years ago that the sun is shining and continues to shine in Fuquay Varina despite a pandemic.
No, that's right.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Wunsch? Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, I hope everybody has been by the Art Center to view the, the, the model for the mural that's going up on the building, the side of the building facing, I guess it's West Vance Street.
Right.
That would be a good review for everybody to think about what this community is. I, I mean, I think it pictures all the things we're talking about here tonight that it's going to be wonderful. But it really does give you that warm, fuzzy feeling of being in this town and makes me think about one of Molly's daughters that was visit, came to visit right in the middle of our tree lighting event last year. And she's, or it might have even been the year before. She said it looked just like Hallmark movie when she came down the street. She was just really charmed. So we had, we do just have the best place in the world to live. And I want to thank the town for the things that are being done to give us a little facelift on our, in our downtown area with some replacement of trees and planters and getting somebody in to look after all of that and, you know, help maintain it and water it. And I really appreciate that. It's a long way from our depending on the garden club members to pull their wagons up and down the street to plant plants and and water.
It started off with the Historic Society trying to do it.
I can remember one of, going with-
We bought the, we bought the planner.
We had screwdrivers getting grass out of the cracks in the sidewalk. So we've come a long way and I really appreciate what the town is is doing now to help us with our face.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, Marilyn?
No, I'm done.
Okay. You know, a few, a few comments that that I would have. I think it's very important that we keep our downtown area spruced up, clean, nice, finished. It's who we are and it has become the face of our community. And it's a signature. And we need to do all we can, and especially as change comes. Because change is coming. We all know that change is coming into the downtown district. But it's going to be more and more important that we do a good job of keeping our common areas up and making sure that they're nicely done. The Art Center, you know, Maureen has been out with knee surgery as well. But she, I think she's doing good. I've talked to her a couple of times and she seems to be doing pretty good. But I'm amazed at how she continues to plan. And I see the little area that's outside. It's kind of like, and I don't know, I call it the green for no other reason. It's just a little bit plot of, of alone on the north side of the Art Center. They're practicing there. Some of the girls, the little girls that are doing the ballet or the dance scenes, I should say, in the Nutcracker. I see them practicing there as I do my, my walks. And I have been, they're so excited about this Nutcracker. I mean, they, they really are. And I just appreciate Maureen and her team keeping the arts alive here during COVID because it's, you know, it's the most interesting time that I've ever been that any of us have ever been through in our lifetime. But that was my, my main thought there. Just a few things that I would mention is certainly the medicine drop-off tomorrow at the police station. And that's, what'd you say, Adam, three to-
Two to five p.m.
Two to five o'clock. And I will try to go by over there. I'm sure, you know, if any of y'all can go by, I think it would be a good thing. Well, I say I will. I got Camp, Campo meeting tomorrow, too. And we got a Chamber of, that's not tomorrow, but that's, I've got a couple of church meetings tomorrow night. But a ribbon cutting at Aspen Dental on the 22nd, which is Thursday, I reckon. And then another Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting at Gold's Gymnasium. Is that a reopening or a?
You know, the-
Bought that place and redid it?
Yeah.
Changed names?
Change, it's a change, a name change and a, just a redo, okay. And that's on Friday.
That's my understanding.
In the morning. Do you think a gymnasium will have coffee and donuts?
Nine thirty on Fridays.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
You know, donuts are kind of against the gymnasium's policies, but I like donuts.
There you go. That'd be a good, that'd be a good thing.
BYOD.
BYOD.
We also have a, and I've agreed to go, this is an interesting thing. Dominion Gas, I believe, isn't that what they're called now, Adam?
Yes, sir.
Has built, they have just gotten their 600,000th customer. And that customer is in Fuquay Varina. And they're going to have a big deal on this, celebrating this 600,000th customer.
Free gas for life?
And it will be November the 10th. And we're thinking, Adam, between nine and 10, we don't know-
Yeah, they haven't given the exact details out, but they've generally said between nine, nine and 10 o'clock.
In the morning. So I think it'll be a very nice event if y'all can, you know, can acknowledge or come by. And I got an email, did you see the email I got from, I read in the governor's office, Amande Cohen?
I did see that, the letter.
Yeah, was there anything to it?
This is a thank you letter for participating on the call.
Participating in what we've done, yeah, okay. And Adam and I'll be on another one. When is the next one coming up?
October 30th. So the North Carolina Metro Mayor's Coalition will be meeting to discuss, if you recall, at our last town board meeting, this board discussed Fuquay Varina's legislative priority to priorities to submit to the North Carolina League of Municipalities for their consideration and their legislative goals plan. The North Carolina Metro Mayor's Coalition will be going through a similar exercise. So Mayor Byrne will likely mention many of the ones that this board has endorsed as our legislative priorities as he's speaking with the other mayors at the largest cities and towns across the state. The Metro Mayor's Coalition will then in turn work to provide feedback and guidance to the League of Municipalities for their consideration to include in their overall, overall goals plan. That'll be on the 30th of October that the mayor will participate in that.
Yeah. And we've gotten some cards back. And I, one is from the Ronnie Williams family. Ronnie was the mayor of Garner and just acknowledging the flowers that we, that we sent. And my wife and I sent some to Peggy. And my wife and I sent some to Peggy, the Vizes. You know, I worked with her for, for many, many years, and Penny, or Peggy, and Billy Nann both have, have passed away, and they were, they were part of the heart of the community for many, many years. Billy worked in Leo Matthews, Leo Matthews was a member of the town board for many, many years. But he worked in the farm supply company of Tilly and Matthews, I reckon, there in town, kind of where the Art Center is, in that right down from there. And then eventually opened up the store south of town, the little mini-market there. And, but he was a historic part of our community for many, many years. And got an Eagle Scout, Sam Priest, P E R, P R E S T I P I N O.
That's too many letters for me to follow in there.
Yeah. P R E S T, Priestipino, Priestipino. But he had, he's Eagle Scout, Court of Honor, will be Sunday, November the 1st at 4:30 at the Fuquay Varina United Methodist Church. And I'll try to attend that if I can. Okay, Adam, we don't have any closed session?
No closed session this evening.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, some moot.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor signify, I must say an aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.